This conference will now be recorded.
Short, it's a short. We've got gold tonight.
You're gonna get that phone call at seven o'clock, right?
Sorry, we have a family emergency.
TV, come on. The satellite just blew off the ceiling.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda items.
Madam Mayor, I can make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Adams.
Yes.
Malott.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Item number two, requests or comments from the public. There being none, we'll move on to item number three, hearing a presentation from USD 204 Superintendent regarding district initiatives, enrollment trends, school safety.
Thank you for having me here tonight. It's always good to come on a chief's night. Appreciate the second billing. Anyway, let me see if I can get the clicker right and get on my note track and we'll get started. I am Dan Brungardt, Superintendent of USD 204, Bonner Springs, Edwardsville. I've been there, this will be my 10th year. In terms of dog years for superintendent, that's quite a few right now. So I appreciate the board and the district and the community's keeping me on this long. So with that. So this is our vision statement. It was put together by the Board of Education, working with community partners, students and parents, and preparing today's learners for tomorrow opportunities. You think of school, maybe when you were a student or maybe when your kids were a student, school was kind of like K-12. K-12, then you're done. It's like a crock pot. You put it in, 12th grade hit, then you're out. The goal now is really to extend it to like pre-K to 13, 14, and 15. So what we have now is we have opportunities for kids. We have 51 concurrent college credits students can gain while they're in school. My students each picked up like 23 hours, which didn't get them out in less than four years, but it wasn't like they took a victory lap for five. So that was very nice. Because we, because there's a state statute, all the vocational courses, courses like welding or CNA program, those kinds of courses are currently paid through the state statute. We have Easter dollars and Easter dollars right now are COVID dollars, similar to what the city has in a different fund, I believe. And we actually use some of that money to pay for the other classes like Comp 1, Comp 2, Comp 3, Algebra, and those help students bridge that gap. Because once we know if you start college in high school, you have a better chance of completing it. And you also have kind of a pathway. Once you start collecting those hours, you have like a head start on everything. So we have a lot of our students doing that, which is nice. So you don't really think of school as K-12, think of it as K-13, K-14, K-15. We have a CNA program and it's taught in our school. And then we partner with area housing or, I don't want to call them retirement homes, I was going to use the wrong word, retirement homes for our kids to work in. Probably my favorite thing was that we had a young lady who, at the end of it, I asked, you know, how'd it go? And she said, "I hated it. Oh, my gosh. I will never do this rest of my life." And I thought, you know, you probably saved either you or your folks a lot of money. Because you got to do that in high school and you know healthcare is completely out. So if you look up here at Edwardsville Elementary School, you can see it started in 1865. In 1883, they built a school up on the hill, I believe, a brick building, which was used up until the 1950s. Then 1958, you start seeing where our current building's at, and then 62, 70, 82. It's probably one of the most built upon buildings there is out there. And the reason you can tell that is if you're touring Edwardsville Elementary School, you can see different shades of brick that used to be on the outside of the building. We have them covered up, which is always cool to see. Our first project occurred before the bond issue, and that's when we put in a wood floor. In our gymnasium, we put one in our gymnasium here at Edwardsville Elementary and one at Bonner Springs Elementary, mainly for us to use for practice and for kids to use during PE, but also for the community. Because the communities use these gyms almost as much as we do in the evenings and on weekends. It's actually Edwardsville, the city of Edwardsville, I think purchased those glass backboards as part of the project. So it's a good partnership there. When the bond issue occurred, when I first came to USD 204, we had DRE, which was almost brand new, which is now 11 or 12 years old. You'd walk in there, first thing you'd see is the media center, then it branch out to those other places. Then BSE was very similar to go around the corner. When you walk into Edwardsville Elementary, the media center was to your left, and there was lots of poles and things in there that wasn't quite the best facility for that. And then, so we redid the media center. The media center was located, is now located where the cafeteria was and where we bake. So it's a very nice big room. I was there today and you'll see parents lined up at our book fair. It's a classic book fair. We usually do those during parent teacher conferences. It's kind of low hanging fruit to have the parents come in for the conference and also buy some books. So that works well for us. Then we have a kind of a reading area. My favorite spot is right behind that shelf. You can barely see it, but there's a spot where you can sit and it's kind of shaped like a house. Just a cool area. To the side, we actually have a glass, a glass enclosed meeting room for a smaller group. The front office, once again, 10 years ago, the front office, I don't know if you've ever been in the front office. You walked in, it was very tiny, very restricting, not a lot of room for much of anything. So we upgraded the front office. That's where the library was. We put in a nice meeting room for when parents come. Then, you know, probably not a lot of parents ever went into the nursing office or the nurse's office, which to me seemed kind of septic at the time. But we expanded that. We put in two beds. We have a handicap accessible bathroom. And Ms. Kaufman is our school nurse and she does a great job there. Which brings us to the cafeteria. Cafeteria was built on and then within the cafeteria, we also built an additional room. And then we put in an all new service area. And that service area, once again, has all new ovens and things of that nature. So it's a very nice facility. It was quite a bit of improvement. There's lots of things you don't see. So when you walk in the entryway, at one time during this project in the summer, we probably had an eight foot hole, length of the hallway, because we were replacing a sewer pipe. And those are things that you just come up during construction. So, you know, before state unification in the early 60s, basically Edwardsville and Bonner Springs ran two separate paths. Edwardsville out of school, Bonner Springs out of school. But in 1945, Edwardsville High School were given the choice of attending other larger schools. And I think they had classes from then, from as little as one to 12. I graduated in a class of five myself, so I think 12 is kind of large. But in 1945, they switched over. And since that time, students started going to Bonner Springs. And then in the 60s, we had a unification. And so that's when Edwardsville and Bonner Springs combined. So this is our district. And basically, the city of Edwardsville is contained in USD 204, except for that little park right up by the interstate. And I think there's two houses there. There's two houses there in KCK 500. Now, I know Mr. Webb reached out to the former superintendent. When I say former superintendent, KCK, they've had lots of former superintendents recently. But the former, former superintendent, and didn't get very much traction on that. But I might, it's okay, I'll bring it up.
Mayor, KAR, it's not mayor, it's a fine, yes, we have very brief visit.
Brief visit?
Yes.
So there's a new superintendent, so you might try again. The city of Bonner Springs is not contained within our district. It goes into Leavenworth County. And then, of course, we have unified government up top on the other side of State Avenue and kind of around to the side. Probably the nicest thing for our school district is the casino. 95% of the building sits on our property, which is a real healthy tax base for the district, having that building there. And the south turn of the racetrack. So this is the history of our enrollment. Catch up here. So our enrollment dropped recently. I believe part of that has to do with the COVID. But the one thing to look at is during the bond issue, based upon previous numbers before COVID, we actually increased our capacities to all the schools. So our capacity at BSE stayed at 575. It's kind of a landlocked building. There's not much you can do with it. And to be honest with you, they don't see that area growing very much. They look at DRE and they look at Edwardsville. And so we could actually have five sections of each grade level in each building right now in both those schools. So we're built up. Same thing with Clark Middle School and the high school. But if you look at Edwardsville, you know, you start out with 450 and you run very high till about 2006, 2007. That's when DRE was brought on, Delaware Ridge Elementary School. And when that occurred, you see the drop because kids were relocated up there. And then we had an increase and just recently, we pared down some to 338. Thank you. Any questions about enrollment? I'll open my water and take a drink. Part of the problem we had with COVID was we were highly regulated by the Wyandotte County Health Department. So when the governor shut us down for the last nine weeks of school, but then in the first three nine weeks of school, the next year, we were only allowed to run at half capacity. And at the high school, we couldn't change classes. So we couldn't have kids going from class to class. And at the high school level, it's almost impossible to run. So we had kids participate in like a homeroom, and then everything else had to be virtual. And we lost students during that time because you could go over to Leavenworth County, just across the county line there, and be full in school. And so we're hoping as time goes by, we pick up some of those families and some of those kids back up. I will say I'm always very pleased with the city council of Edwardsville and also Mr. Webb. Lots of times when you're talking about mill levies, there's a comparison between the school, the city, the county. I've never seen that here at Edwardsville, and I do appreciate that. And part of the reason is you really can't compare the two anyway. So the school is very controlled on their mill levy. So we have the general fund, and no matter what happens, the general fund is 20 mills. And that doesn't even, we don't ever see that money. That goes straight to the state. So if we had five kids, it'd be 20 mills. If we had 4,000 kids, it'd be 20 mills. Okay? And but, but the total amount of the general fund is based upon student numbers. Supplemental general, the board has more options with, and it can be 33% of the general fund. And then in capital L.A., that was set by previous boards at eight mills, and that's only used for roofs and things of that nature, fixing things up. And then bond and interest, that was set by the majority of the voters when they passed the bond issue. So if you look at our mill levy, 10 years ago, 65 mills, and now it's down to 52 mills. Part of that is the general fund stays the same, capital L.A. stays the same. So within our mill levy, that's 28 every time. But what goes up and down is the supplemental general and the bond and interest. The supplemental general has gone down for two reasons. Number one, our student headcount dropped. And when our student headcount drops, we lose that per pupil funding. And then the other one is our valuation has gone up so much. So if you look at bond and interest and how it's dropped, that has nothing to do with anything more than this year, the total district valuation went up $40 million. And so I called the county several times to make sure because that's a, that's a big number. And so, but, but we were able to lower the mill levy. But once again, you really can't compare the city to the school because when you guys raise a dollar, for the most part, you, you get it all. You don't have these other things going on. And then the other thing is you don't have these fixed things that occur that give you no latitude to move. So I do appreciate that. So there's our mill levies. Things that are affecting us most is probably teachers and staffing. This used to be a Western Kansas problem, but now it's a, it's a, it's a problem throughout the whole area. Teachers have a couple of issues there, why we're not getting the teachers. Number one is they're just not in college. So teacher pay has gone up. Our teacher pay has gone up. It's competitive with teacher pay in the area. Problem is, when you were deciding to be a teacher, if you were going to become a nurse or if you're going to become that, those salaries have raised even more. So if you're deciding between being a teacher or a nurse, there's a much bigger gap between those starting salaries. And that's pretty much across the board. The other one is is a support for the profession. It used to be, you know, you'd tell people, "I'm going to go become a teacher," and you know, you'd get a pat on the back, "Good job. We need more teachers." We're not quite seeing that right now. And part of that is due kind of to like a social media surge, I will call. Something happens in Wisconsin that's not getting to school, next thing I know, I get a call. I was at a meeting recently with the Missouri superintendents and Kansas superintendents, and somehow we're in a small group and we all got talking about how many calls we got about litter boxes in our schools. There's no litter boxes in anybody's school. I don't know where that started or how it started, but I can rest assured in Kansas, I would bet strong money that that does not occur. But yet, that's, that's where we're at. When, instead of somebody worried about what we're teaching in algebra, or this or that, I get calls about litter boxes. So that's unfortunate. Bus drivers, once again, we have our own bus drivers. We have our own bus drivers. We have a young lady named Debbie Elmer, who has been doing that since she was 20 years old. And she's my age. So I always tell people, when Debbie goes, I'm going to have to retire because she does such a nice job. If you've ever been a superintendent, having those buses run as well as they do here is good. But I will say, even though they run well, we don't always run on time and we do get some phone calls on that. Classified staff is probably similar to everybody else. Once COVID came back, we're just not seeing the numbers of people applying or people interested in our jobs. We have raised our, our salaries on that, but that's not helping. Then probably like you, increased cost insurance, our health insurance is going up 20% this year. We've been, for the last four years, it's been like 2% and 3%, we just had a bad year. Utilities, including diesel fuel. Special education, and I don't mean this in a negative way, we have special education. We have students in special education. When that program was first presented, it was supposed to be funded at 100% level. Meaning, we wouldn't have to take money out of the general fund to fund special education. Well, over time, that has slipped greatly. And so now, as special education increases and we're asked to provide more programs, that money comes out of what we use in the classroom. So this year, there's a big push by the school districts with the state to fund that at a higher level. Because that just puts more money back, back into the classroom. Food costs, you know, we serve about 3,000 meals a day. And within that, we have lots of food costs. General building maintenance, and then housing issues for staff. We have a hard problem with teachers who want to move into our district, finding places to live. They're, they're just not there. And I follow Zillow, "I'm not looking for a house," but, but even right now, there's like four houses on the market. And they go, "They've slowed down since the interest rate went up." But, but this isn't the time we're looking. But, and I know Edwardsville has a plan for additional housing. Bonner Springs has a plan for additional housing, and KCK has a plan for additional housing up in Delaware Ridge area. And we're just waiting for the shovels to turn. But, but that is something that is a problem for people who work for us that want to live here. This is our strategic plan. It was put together by the board during COVID. And it's basically what we do and how we do it. And the big part of that, under student programs, once again, is working with PK 212. So when I went to kindergarten, it was a half-day program. Anybody else? Half-day? I will say the one thing about Kansas is even though we offer full-day kindergarten, it's still not required by the state of Kansas. So the big thing we see right now is really getting kids in even before school starts. So we still have our Head Start program, which was started in 1964. We also have an Out Risk program that works with about 30 different kids. And then we started a regular daycare, full-pay daycare at DRE for all district people. All this, all community members. So we're slowly looking at, at that as, as, as we move into how can we better serve people in the community. For the Head Start and the Out Risk program and our pre-K special education program, we bus all the students wherever they're at in the district to those programs. So transportation is provided. Then on the backside of that, career and technical education. One of our bigger programs is school, not school safety, but let me look at my notes here. Is public safety. We have Officer Davis who teaches that. We start that actually in the middle school and goes all the way up. We have some real, lots of kids doing our culinary science. And recently, sewing has picked back up. So for a while, we didn't have too many people interested in sewing, but that's picked back up. And it's not sewing now, it's design, clothing design. And so we're actually getting more kids. We still have our senior projects. And the senior projects are either career-based or community-based. And I would, you know, two of my favorite senior projects, I always think I'm mechanical. I do believe that. My wife will tell you different, that I'm not very mechanical. But, but we had one student take a pickup and he put a clutch in where there was an automatic. I just thought that was pretty interesting. And then we had another student who took a John boat and made it into a really nice bass boat. And I thought that was, that was very cool. So we have those and those work well. We did move those more electronic to make it a little bit easier for everybody to do. Personnel, once again, we're working hard to, to get better personnel, actually to have people apply. The one thing we've worked well with is in Pittsburgh State College. They have a program, it's kind of called Grow Your Own. So if you're a paraprofessional or a teacher assistant and work for us, you can work through that college and actually get a teaching degree. And that's been nice. Fort Hays State also offers something like that, so we, we've worked with some of those things. One of our career pathways is being a teacher. So just like we have public safety, we have education. Communicating and marketing, I would say, since we lost our paper, that's been a big problem for us. How to reach out to people, we send a newsletter home each week. We work to, to work with these groups. But, but that is very difficult to, to figure your niche because it seems like the only time you get any press at all is bad press. So, so if there's something not going well, I always say, when you hear a helicopter, that means it's not a good day. Because that means the news is coming out for something that occurred. And it, sometimes it's a Facebook post that's gone wild or something. But that's something we struggle with too. And then facilities, once again, keeping those up to date. When you can measure your, your roofs in acres, it's, it's a lot of work keeping those up to date. In fact, we just re-roofed most of Edwardsville this summer. So, nice thing about that, when people say, "Why do you always mention you just re-roofed a building?" To note that most of the bond money went for upgrading facilities. It didn't go for fixing things that hadn't been done. You know, it wasn't for maintenance, it was for upgrades. So, any questions there? So I'll take any questions if you have them.
The Pittsburgh College in Fort Hays State, you said that allowed paras to get their teaching degrees?
Yeah.
Is that something that, is it like of no cost to them or scholarships or, or something?
They have to pay the tuition.
Okay.
But they work within their schedule and they work with us to get, pick up that degree.
Okay, so they just work around their current schedule to make it an easier fit? Okay, I just thought that would be a great thing to maybe push out there to folks. That sounded like a really great program. Special education, you said there was hopefully going to be some more funding through the state, I believe you said. Would that be earmarked specifically for the students that are enrolled? Like the paras working with those students in those specific classrooms? Or would that money just go to general fund?
So, so special education is funded differently than everything else. And special education is based upon the number of teachers you employ and then the number of paras. So, so the teacher rate, and I'm going to, it was around $29,000. So for each teacher we hire, we receive $29,000. For each para, you receive 40% of that. Now, our starting salary is about 43.6. Our average salary is about 51, 52. So if you take the 29 and you see the difference between those, that's, that's where the misfunding is at. So any increase to special education always goes on the base of the teacher pay. So if they'd raised that $2,000, that would go into the special education fund. That would increase the para pay. What that does is, the end of the year, we don't have to make a biggest transfer out of general fund to cover the, the miss between our current salary and what we're getting paid for each special education teacher. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I appreciate that. I know a handful of paras currently, and that is a job that, that goes unnoticed, I feel like, and they work really hard. So that would be great to just incentivize that position. Do anyone else have questions?
Yeah, Mr. Brungardt, you, I think you and I talked, I don't know if it was last year, year before, but during one of the bond projects, wasn't there quite a bit of security protocols put in place?
I'm sorry. Yeah, so, so for security, through the bond issue, we updated all of our front doors, all of our back door, all of our doors together, so they're all keyed together. We have passes that you have to enter to go in. We have front doors where you have to talk to go in. We have, in Bonner Springs proper, we have an agreement with the Bonner Springs Police Department. So we have one officer up there between the middle school and the high school. For elementary schools, we work with the Wyandotte County Sheriff because they have the ability to be at any building. And then we actually share that individual between the three buildings. And he rotates between those three buildings every day. And we do that recently, we had a gentleman from Homeland Security, who talks fast and loud, came and he went through all of our facilities and we're looking at some of the things he talked about. Our camera system is very state of the art in all of our schools. You'll find more cameras at the high school and middle school, mainly because at the elementary school, kids kind of travel in groups. Everybody goes to the bathroom, everybody goes to lunch. We still have the outside cameras and the corridor cameras. At the middle school and high school, it's a little bit more pronounced. And then we actually received a grant from the Kansas State Department of Education to increase our outside cameras at the middle school and a few more there. And then also, I don't know if you've been to the high school, but at the high school, you have to come almost all the way into the office and then you go out. So we're, we're moving that doorway up, putting a desk there. So it just provides a little bit more security back there. So for instance, not on, on this thing, on my laptop, I can access all the cameras. And in fact, when somebody rings a doorbell in my office, I can open any door at, at the school if I chose to. You know, we have people doing that at the school. And so it's, it's very up to date and it works well. The other thing is, I believe, I'm not sure, but most of our local municipalities have an option to go on those cameras.
Nice.
They have some.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm glad to hear that. I believe it was Chuck Clannahan, was it from the DHS that came and did the assessment? Yeah, and so I'm glad that you mentioned about the grant money because that's, he's the guy to get on your side and to assess your facility and, and help you with that grant funding. So I'm, I'm glad that you did that. And so that, I think to me, that's a selling point too for any new, new teachers coming in too as well. You know, knowing that you guys have that in place, so good job.
I really appreciate your leadership in the community and your, and staying involved and plugged in. It means a lot. You've obviously done well. Do them a question. What is the process if a parent is concerned about an academic issue or a curriculum issue? What's the process for them to inquire or appeal or complain about something?
So, so within our board policy, So, so within our board policy, so let's say somebody has a complaint about a teacher. Let's just start there. That usually goes to the principal and then to me. So that's, let's say somebody has a complaint about our science book. So there is a process where they can come and then they fill out a form and then they meet with the principal. If through that process they're still not satisfied, that form goes up and it goes to a committee of, I think, two teachers, and don't quote me on this, two parents and an administrator. And then they go through the process of reviewing the materials. And then if the parent is still not satisfied, it goes to the Board of Education.
Thank you.
And so it's important to note that all the textbooks that we use are picked by a committee of, of staff, teachers, and then it goes through the board process and so are the extra materials. So everything we purchase, we buy, goes through a committee. And basically what we teach, you know, some people say, why, why do you teach this? So the Kansas State Department of Education sets what we teach. So KSDE has their set prescribed curriculum that we're supposed to teach. We take that and then we build that into pacing calendars. And that's how we work with teachers to get through the year. So what do you teach in first grade math? Well, this is what we're going to teach in first grade. And then the Kansas State assessments are tied to that. So, so it's really more of a fluid situation. When I first started teaching, I student taught in the fifth grade and one of the teachers liked decimals. And so that class learned about decimals. The other teacher liked fractions. Now granted, I spent more time in the decimal class because fractions, I'm probably not the best at. But, but, so if you were a fifth grader back then, this, this class got decimals, this class got fractions, then when you went to sixth grade, it was kind of a mix. And so that is why we have such a prescribed curriculum is the goal is if you're in fourth grade in Edwardsville and fourth grade in BSE or fourth grade in DRE, you're learning the same thing at the same rate, at the same pace, which hopefully ties back to if you're in Tonga Noxi or Jetmore, Kansas, or wherever, it, it all lines up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight. We so appreciate your time. Oh, Garrett, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
I can make a couple of comments.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, uh, good or bad, I'm a product of the school district. I actually went to the school that was on the hill for a year and a half. So I was one of the first classes that went through the new Edwardsville grade school in 58, I believe it was. And I went, I was in the first class that went completely through four years of the new high school. I graduated in 69 and it opened in like four years before that. I had a few, I did go to the 51 reunion over the summer since we're out 50 years now. But I was really impressed with the facilities that are up there. I had been in the high school for a long time, since I was a booster club president back in the, in the nineties. I was really impressed with the facility itself. And I think the money's been well spent for our students in our district. And the, I'm a vocational oriented, I taught vocational education for 37 years. And when you said something about superintendents, I went through 27 superintendents in 37 years. And that's why I retired. I got tired of breaking them in to see them go somewhere else. That's the humor that I throw out. But the vocational department up there really amazes me on what's coming about on the vocational department. I think it's a, it's a fantastic facility. And I think maybe some of the questions I was going to ask you is how, how do you rate the success of that program? The recruitment process to get students in there? And what is the placement ratio of the kids that are leaving it?
So I might have to get back to you on a couple of those. I don't have those in my head.
I don't want to put you on the spot.
We kind of rate how the program's going by how many kids want to be in it. And most of those classes have, you know, over 10, up to 20 in them. And especially, you know, Dan Burns in his welding class, we have welding up there. Dan Burns also teaches small engine repair. Lots of people like that class. We have Mr. Melick. Mr. Melick is a wood shop teacher and he teaches wood shop, like, like traditional wood shop, you can build a shelf. But we're also building a tiny home. This will be our second tiny home we built. We work with a group out of Colorado and he basically buys our tiny home and he has a tiny home village up there where people can come and rent that for a week or two. And this is our second one. I think Paola builds them for the same company and maybe Ness City of all places builds these tiny homes. And so, so that's really hardcore construction right there. We have drafting and CAD. We also have a maker space where we can take those products and we have 3D printer. We have a etching printer that etches into glass. And some of those are like real world skills that you might do later on. So when it comes to our success rate and where they go after that, I'll, I'll have to ask Mrs. Hoffmann about that because she keeps track of those numbers. But overall, the success has been in the number of kids interested in our, in our program. You know, some kids, so when I was a kid, this wasn't even a job, but some students want to be a social influencer. Have you ever heard of the students say they want to be a social influencer? No? Look it up. It's interesting. But because of that, our, our video production also is full of kids too. And actually, our newspaper and yearbook still run with a full.
That's kind of where I was going to go next because there should be an awful lot of success with that. I don't, is there any way that the district might consider putting out an electronic newspaper for the district or are they already doing that?
So we put out an electronic newspaper for the school. And, and I believe you can go online to Bonner Springs High School and see that. For the city, it'd be a little bit different. And we've never, we approached that one time with our former teacher and she said, school newspapers are not community newspapers, Mrs. Holder. And so I, I listened to her and so some of our newspaper does have stories about the community in it. And in fact, some of them actually have larger stories about the nation, things that are topical to kids. So really that newspaper is formatted on what they think students are interested in what they'll read. And that's, that's what it's based upon. But it is electronic now, it's not paper. And so you can access that online.
That's the questions I wanted to ask. I thank you for the responses.
I did have one other question come to mind and that was with the enrollment numbers. We talked about dropping a little bit after COVID. A lot of folks went to different districts, but some of them are just homeschooling right here in Edwardsville and Bonner Springs. Is there any appetite for the school district to connect with those homeschooling parents and that to give maybe access to sports or extracurricular activities?
So we do give them access to the school. We have some homeschool kids who have participated in band and music and those kinds of things. For sports and athletic activities within our policy, you have to be enrolled six hours during the day. Some of that has to deal with the expectations for students and grades. So if you're in sports, you have to keep the point average. When you're in sports, that's controlled at the school level by the teachers and that way it keeps everything level. So, but, but we have students come in and have for, since I've been here for different programs.
All right. Again, thank you so much for your time and coming out tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bernie Barrett. I will say, I was a product of building trades. That's what I went through high school to do. It served me well as a public works director for the last couple of months. And I just had one of those small classes of 1,595 at my school. So I just went back to my high school reunion. I think we had 225 at the reunion or something. And I knew too, I think it's helped me.
My, my first degree was from Northwest Kansas Vocational School in Carver. I had to work my way through college. That seemed like the best option, but I did.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good to see you.
All right. Item number four, your staff update regarding the city's ARPA allocation and allowable uses.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I understand we have an activity at around 7:20 this evening, so we'll try to keep this brief for this evening. This is really kind of a, a reintroduction of this topic. As you all know, we have what's known as the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA. And we, like most cities across the country, have, have or are benefiting from the ARPA program. Just a little bit of history again, all of this came out of, out of the pandemic and the recovery. Some of y'all may remember we had CARES, which was a, I call it the, the first generation. But the ARPA Act was actually signed into law in March 11th of 2021. Its primary purpose was really to provide funds to help us respond, communities respond or continue to respond to the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. Lot of definitions of what that means out there, but that was its primary purpose. Like most federal funding programs, the law gets passed, or I would say like most programs, laws get passed. Have a great evening, sir. Have, get passed and then at some time down the road, oftentimes a year or so, before you get final rules or rules, there's a whole public process. This was no different. And so we finally received the final rules in January of 2022. But by that point, most communities had received the first half of their funds. We were the same. So we got our first half of funds in 2021 and most communities said, well, we're not really quite sure what the rules are yet, so we're going to wait and, and see where this goes. Again, we were much the same. Probably there's really two critical dates for us at this point. And the first date is December 31st of 2024. And by then we have to have funds obligated. And obligated doesn't mean spent. So the best example I can give, when we do these highway, these road programs that we do through KDOT, at the point we actually set it for a bid, those federal funds are obligated. So we haven't spent the funds, but the funds are obligated. That's also the point we make our contribution into that program. And then of course, whatever project it is that's built out over time, payments are made. And then at the end, at some point in the end, they say the project is closed. And I imagine this will be like a lot of the other federal programs, two or three or four years down the road, a certain number of these programs will be audited. And who knows what, what the outcome will be because probably the rules will change a little bit and we'll think we have everything in place and, and we don't always have it all in place, but we will work hard to be there. So I know December 31st sounds like a long ways away, but if you think about obligated, right? We, we have obligated means we have a contract. We have something set. It doesn't mean, hey, we think that's a really great idea. Let's go spend that money in 2025. That's not obligated. So we'll, we'll have to have some contractual relationships. And again, I realize it's two years away, but these things can catch up on us and sometimes the programming to get to that point can take a year, for example. You know, the big question is, so how can the money be used? It's really pretty broad. Kind of the key thing is this, this item called revenue loss. And so what the program said is we're going to give you a certain amount of money based on, on basically populations is what they use. And you have to prove up your revenue loss. That was the original concept. And so what you had to do is say, well, I was getting this much money maybe out of my casino funding, but I only got this much. Or I was getting this much out of some other revenue sources. And you could show that those were impacted by COVID. Well, they came back and said, well, you can still use that formula and prove up all of your funds or you can get the standard allowance. So very similar to our taxes, right? You can go do all your exemptions and things and say, that's it. Or you say, I'm going to take the standard deduction. It's the easiest way. I don't think I'm going to probably be able to prove up or show all the support to get the same amount of money. And so we have this $10 million standard allowance. Well, we didn't have, number one, we didn't get that much money. And number two, we did not have $10 million in losses in the city as a result of COVID, at least to the government. So we will pursue or use revenue loss as our basis, but we still have to show and demonstrate how we're using those dollars in our general government service program. So we can't just take the money, put it over the general fund and say, all's good. Right? But we have to still be able to support it. So how do you support it? Well, there's, and these are very broad areas, right? And so I'm sure as we get into these discussions later down the road, you may say, well, can we spend it on this? And our response is going to be, let us double check. We have connections at the state level to, to verify that because the last thing we want to do is spend money and then find out we have to reimburse the federal government for it. Generally, public health, economic impact. Again, economic impact is around, you know, harm to workers, maybe a business closed. Maybe there's, there's things around that that you're trying to support. Public health is, is public health in all those broad sectors. It may be grants to small businesses. So different programs have been done around that. Infrastructure, predominantly water, sewer, broadband, stormwater. So your, your basics. But roads are in here in a little different way. But, but these are the big ones, right? So there, these were specifically identified as potential uses of funds. So, yeah, I know we've had a lot of discuss, really on all of these areas, we don't do water, so it's not really an area we would look at. Broadband is, you know, there's a difference between broadband being the big backbone part of it and broadband being how do I get it to the final user? Right? And so there's some different rules about what broadband means. Public health response, I'm going to say fundamentally that's being used by your county public health departments, right? Giving vaccinations, working with women, infant, children, those types of things. Predominantly that's the public health response side. And premium pay, some communities, it, it, sometimes it gets hard to calculate these things was, well, if people were working in a frontline COVID position, you could give them some kind of a premium pay. An organization like ours, I'm not sure who wasn't on the front line in, in this area. Obviously, public safety gets the bigger focus, right? Police, fire, EMS, those types of things. But I mean, we had public works people out during the whole time, helping with food distributions and with shots and, and here. And so it gets a little challenging around this premium pay. And it's also, is it something that can be supported long term? Right? Because these are kind of one-time dollars. And so I think if that's an area, we have to really look at how that feeds into the bigger program. I think most of y'all know, when I see programs like this, I really focus around what are things you can do? And it's going to be a one-time use of those funds and not get into using it for things that are going to cost you forever because the revenue source will be gone. Right? Once it's gone, it's gone and it's probably not coming back. Non-allowable uses, and these are probably more specific. They do, you know, we can't use it to offset or reduce tax revenue. In other words, we couldn't use it to say, well, we'll reduce our mill levy or we'll reduce this or we'll do this and we'll just supplement with this. No, we can't do that. We can't use it for pension funds. We don't run pension funds. So from our standpoint, that's, that's not really an issue. That's generally more of a state type issue. Some cities may have their own pension funds. Can't use for debt service. So we can't say, hey, let's skip a debt payment and use these monies to do that and then we'll have that extra money that we can go use for some other place. As it says, you know, there is judgment or settlements, you know, if we had had a, some kind of a civil suit, it says we can't use it for that. Now, I don't know what would happen if the civil suit was directly related to the pandemic. Maybe, maybe there is a use there, but generally speaking, no. And obviously anything that would undermine COVID-19 mitigation strategies, I can't really tell you what those are. But, but whatever that definition is, we couldn't use it for that. But again, I think that would be things where you're going against something that mitigated, you know, mitigated something. I'm not even quite sure that would come up to use. So speaking to Edwardsville specifically, we have received in total $685,978.14. That came basically in two tranches, one in late 2021, one in early 2022. It actually was slightly more than what they originally announced because there were a few cities, and it's by state, that, that was such a small numbers that they just didn't take the funds because they just didn't want to have to relate and deal with maybe some of those things. They didn't have the staff and the capability. So we got a little bit more, it got put through the whole state. So we got a little bit more than what we originally thought, but, but I think originally we were like, like 678 or something like that. So it's, it's not like it was a significant amount. Those are our. Those are our funds. We have placed those funds in our, in our grant fund. We are ob, we are obligated to maintain those by separate accounting, right? So we know when the money come in and we'll know when the money goes out and who we paid it out to and for what purpose it was. And pretty much all those expenditures are going to be, you know, supported by justified by some action of the city council, right? So, so these aren't just money goes in and somebody goes and, and uses it and nobody knows where they're at. So we have that. It could, and I don't know, uh, sometimes we have what's called a single audit. So when you receive a certain amount of federal fundings in any given year, you have to do a single audit. The last one I believe we had was when our fire department served as the, uh, host for money for the SBCAs, but, but we supported other cities, right? But we were the recipient of the funds. It was in excess of a million dollars. So we had to do a single audit. Each one of those partnering entities pay to share their share of that audit. It's not real expensive, but it is a separate step in the audit process. As you know, and, and early on, this was a little confusing, right? When they first came out, they weren't showing some cities, ours was one of those about funding, because they said, oh, well, there's this unified government thing. And so there's there, uh, we, we made some calls. A number of other cities were in the same kind of scenario. And they, they got it all fixed well before, uh, that came out. But so Wyandotte County receives money as a county entity. And the city of Kansas City, Kansas receives money as a city entity. Obviously, the city will spend the money on those items that it believes are related to the city operations. And then we have the county operations. And that has been the process where we have participated. The mayor has been very active in that of how do we go request some of those funds hitting the county to come back to the cities, specifically Edrasville and Bonner Springs. They also are using it for nonprofits and, and entities that are, that are in the county. But specifically, we're like, well, we want to make sure we make our applications. We made a number of applications, about $3 million. What was, what was interesting, difficult was they had not-for-profits and they had, uh, unified government departments. Well, we're not a not-for-profit i- in the sense of we're not a 501(c)(3). We don't have that type of tax ID number. So we couldn't complete the application because we weren't one of those. And we're not a department of the unified government. So we're like, okay, you say we can, you say we can submit applications. How do we submit application? And the office said, we'll submit it as a, as a department. So we broke ours up into some different areas and we made applications as departments. As of today, I have not heard, I've reached out, they're investigating. I, I'm not sure what we're investigating, but, but we have reached out to say, so has a decision been made on departments and what are those decisions? And how, how's that being determined? I think there's still some up and down on how that's working or going to work, or whether we remember that we had these two cities that filed under departments. I, I spoke to Bonner Springs city manager a few days ago, that, they kind of had the same question late last week. But for our purposes, uh, you, you know, we submitted what we call connecting Edrasville. If you remember, we had a PSP plan called connecting Edrasville. A lot of that was around, uh, safety, pedestrian safety in and around Fourth Street and K32. It also included things such as sidewalks and connections to our parks. When we submitted that, obviously we didn't know, but we also submitted what was called the active transportation grant. The good thing that ARPA has done, from what I can tell, normally in Kansas, in the metro area, there was $2 million of funds available. Subsequently, there's now seven or seven and a half million, seven and a half million dollars worth of funds available. So all of the cities that submitted generally said, well, there's a cap and we all submitted. And so there's actually extra funding, uh, around this TAP, what we call the TAP program. So it looks highly likely that we will get funded under that program for a portion of what we requested here. Now, we didn't request money around Fourth and K32. It was really the connection from here, this, this area to our parks to have that sidewalk and bicycle connection from, from, you know, really this part of the city into our park system. So you never know, but you make application. The, the second one was the concept that we spoke about a lot of times, the learning lab. You know, we've had this discussion of a, you know, quote, library or a learning lab or a place somewhat, as was discussed by the superintendent. I want to come in, I need access to computers. I may not have high-speed access. I need a place that I can go have this access, uh, and learn some of these digital pieces a- a- as children and adults, right? And so that's really what this learning lab is, uh, in, in the future. If we move forward in some facilities, you know, how do we incorporate these in there, et cetera? So slightly over half a million there. The police department has a number of what I would call generally smaller, uh, items, but are very important to what they do each and every day. Again, we didn't want to go invest a lot of money in things that we can't move, quite honestly, in facilities, and we have them and then we lose them. So, so really looked at, uh, Chief Mathies certainly looked at this area around some of our drug, drug testing equipment, safety of the officers, right? Because we all know they're dealing with drugs now that are lethal, right? They don't, they don't, they just have to ingest it, touch it, be around it, and can be lethal to any of us, right? So what do we do to try to protect our people, uh, and, and those types of things and some of the technologies? And so we packaged up about $100,000 there. Backup power. So you, you know, we think about our, especially our community center being our storm shelter, right? It would be at least a medium, medium-term housing facility. So, uh, you know, we're not going to have a category four, uh, storm hit us, but a tornado does the same thing, right? And that, that's why that facility was built. But I don't have any backup power. So if the power's out for two weeks, what do you do with the people that are there? Or this building or our other buildings that are destroyed and that building's there, you know, how do I operate? How does the government just operate? So, uh, Chief Widdam have put together this package of generators. We would look at, that would fund three separate generators. So we could have one for the fire department, which they have one now, but it was put in when the building was put in. One at the community center, which doesn't have one, and one that would basically support police and city hall. Again, those are items that could be moved to a new facility or facilities, right? I, I can name eight places where we could put generators today that we'd like to have them. They're expensive and, and, and you hope you don't have to use them, but, but you certainly need them. And then the last thing was really around the recreational areas. Again, we've talked about that. So the splash pad, you know, developing a splash pad. We were at the LKM conference and, and I know Mr. Adams and I were walking around and there was lots of pool companies there. And I said what I've always said, no, no pool. They are nice and I know the community likes them, but you know, they, they require lots of money. They are not a revenue generator. They're not even a revenue neutral. If you want them, they're great. They're a wonderful asset. But the splash pad is certainly a lower cost at the investment front end and certainly for operational safety, just any number of ways. So again, uh, I think the council as a whole had, had really shown support for these. That was really the, the package. I think we also had one in there that I'm not seeing, uh, around public works, uh, that we also submitted. And I don't remember what the number was. And that was mainly around stormwater. You know, one of our challenges today, and even the new road we built, it looks wonderful, but look to the edges, right? We don't, we don't have any ditches. That, and that's what really causes damages to our road. And to maintain those just takes some specialized equipment to be able to put a ditch on the side of the road, even if it's there to maintain it, clean it out. You know, we can't really get in there, you know, with shovels and, and dig ditches. It just must not be very effective. So we had another one around that. Again, I think our total submittal was around $3 million. Uh, again, have not heard anything.
It was $640,000.
That's right. Thank you. So really from questions and, and discussion, so, so really tonight, the purpose was really just to put this back on our plate. I think Mayor Kahar and I have spoken about, uh, you know, over time, how we can, she and I can work together to help keep this discussion going, bring forth some options. We can have discussions. I mean, you, you may have something that you think would be a good project. You know, one of the things we have to check in is, well, how does that fit within this law, right? Can we do it, right? We want to, we want to make sure we can do it. And then how does that work into priorities as a whole, right? And, and I mean, that, that's really the body here is setting those priorities. What you need from staff, I mean, you can say, well, can we do this? And I can come back and say, well, yes, you can. Well, how much is that going to cost? Well, I don't know. What are we, what are we doing, right? And I don't want to just keep, you know, chasing around projects and coming up with costs, because it costs money to get cost estimates. So I think that's the, the direction, at least from the mayor and I have talked about, being able to keep this before you bring forth things, certainly collectively as a body, uh, you all certainly, you know, without violating open meetings, open records. But, you know, I mean, you can certainly share things with the mayor. You can certainly share things with me and, and we can start putting those discussions, obviously with our staff, and how we, how we use those funds for the best benefit of the citizen. Mayor, with that, I'm happy to answer questions or, or from the council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item number six, council and, oop, sorry, five, jumped ahead. City manager report might, since you have.
Well, while I'm standing here, I, I don't really have much additional on, on there other than, uh, you may have noticed, uh, on the financial reporting pieces, right? You're still getting the check reporting and you're getting the, the, the account balances and those things. You may have not seen the detailed revenue expenditure report. We're, we're not trying to hide anything with the transition of, of finance director. We've been working with our, we have an outside CPA that we work with. And it just getting every, you know, I mean, we, we tried to make sure we knew everything we needed, but we're still kind of, oh, what report is that? And trying to get there. So we hopefully at your next meeting will have you an updated report. And again, some of it's just like, how do we import payroll data into the general, you know, into the general ledger? So we can give you a report that's accurate, right? Doesn't do you any good if I don't have payroll information in there. Uh, and then the second thing is, uh, myself, uh, I, I attended the LKM conference over the weekend. Today, Zach was in attendance, Mr. Adams was in attendance over the weekend, Mark Bishop attended. And he also attended what's called the initial training institute for advanced finances. So I, I would always encourage you all to take advantage of those, uh, the next league dinners for this area is coming up in Miriam on November 3rd. I will not be able to join you, uh, unless I do it by extreme long distance, uh, method. As you know, I will, I will not be in the area. So, uh, but I would encourage you all to attend that if you can find the time. There are several other places, but the closest one is Miriam. That's probably the one that makes sense. And unless there's other things, mayor, I would, that's all I have.
I'm finding, Mike, I got, I've asked this before, I know, but the casino revenues that come in.
Yes.
Are we getting anything extra because of the new kind of bidding that they have up there? Is that, is that none of our money?
No, a- and, and the way that law was drafted, cities are getting any, city counties are not getting any of those dollars. The, the, it's relatively small dollars in relation to casinos. But all of that money basically stays with the state. So, I mean, obviously casinos get, you know, get a certain portion. Uh, but relative to the taxation on that, those taxations go completely to the state. So there's nothing coming to Wyandotte County or the city of Edrasville or any other county or city in the state.
Okay, well, I kind of hit when the superintendent said something about casino revenues.
Right.
I wonder if we're getting any.
Well, their biggest thing is schools, because of the way property taxes are, right? So they're getting those revenues and casinos specifically was the way the law was, right? There was no tax abatements on those buildings and properties. Now, there's been a lot of challenges to its value, but so they receive the property tax revenue. Obviously, that's not within our city, so we don't receive it, but it's very good for the, for the district as a whole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zach, did you have anything for us? Chief Mathies?
Yes, I, you don't have a report for me. It was, we didn't have anything of substantial value report. But, and I don't mean to come off plaintive, but in the sense that we're putting a community health worker in the training facility. And I, I did express some conservative that those were, uh, that's not necessarily my complaint is that that's the only place we have to put somebody. One place is not embarrassing, right? It's painted, but you know who uses that besides you folks when you go in? All of us, all of us have to use it. Now it's going to be an office space. Maybe it's just a couple. But my whole point is where we don't have space and for those kinds of things. And now we're throwing that, you know, even when we talked about the learning lab, we talked about the training room where we host meals and we do all these other things. So it's just one more piece. Then we add to that, we, we're going to have to pay about $6,500 to replace our debt. The, the understructure, paint structure of it is in good condition, uh, but it is in terrible condition on the top surfaces. And so we, we've had a professional look at that and bid that out. It's just more money. We can't help it. You know, it's like a roof project. You just got to go do it. And so that's where we're at. Once again, we're just at these points where we feel bad about doing it, because we could use that money in a lot of other places. But we have to do it just for the safety and it is in pretty poor shape. You know, it's been about, what, seven years or so? But it gets painted every year. This year it just is, it's been just pretty hard on me. So that's one more thing. We got air conditioning work, all these things. So I'm glad we're seeing that we're going to have this team reviewing these, of this project going forward. And I know it's at the pace of, you know, slow government, but it, it's more and more, we're going to have these things. If you go look at the building now, you'll see above all the rock that's happening on that above trim and the paint is peeling away. And what do you do? Do you ignore that for a couple of years and just let it go by the wayside and that's where the thing? So we're trying to balance it all. The safety pieces, we'll have to go far, but we're out of room all, all around. That's, that was my.
Chief Widdam. Nelson Adams?
Regarding the RFQ process, what, what's the timeline and what's the process for reviewing the RFQ?
So we're starting this week. Will be the first meeting with the, the team. And then, Mike, I think you said it kind of depends on how we break up the, um, interviews with the construction, uh, companies that put in, we have eight applications, I believe, to review and then decide who to interview from there and, and whittle it down. And I think Mike's going to kind of determine how many meetings. So Mike, you might want to.
Well, yeah, sure. So I think the intention right now is that we have the committee, we have this committee, uh, they're meeting this Thursday. I've actually already got the material ready to go. And so at that meeting is really just kind of the initial meeting. We'll give them all, so each one of them will get a copy of those proposals. They'll get a copy of the RFQ. We're going to spend a little time just going through the RFQ so they know what the purpose of this is, right? We're, we're not hiring a, 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 a construction company to build something yet, right? We're, we're not, if that's a, it, it's to help us figure out the paths we want to go. And so we'll, we'll kind of run through that RFQ, that kind of three steps that we've already talked about. And then I will request that, uh, they take those and each person independently, and we've used this for rank, just raw ranking, right? One through eight, we have eight proposals. Who do you think's one to the, we'll come back together in a week to two weeks. I, I mean, I don't know everybody's schedules at this point, but that would be my hope. And we would kind of take everybody's rankings and generally my experience has been, you know, the ones and twos all rise to the top anyways, and the sevens and eights all fall to the bottom. And the most difficult one is, do you interview number four? Do you interview number five? They don't, who, you know, I'll, I'll use the mayor, so it's her number four and it's my number two. And it's Mr. Scott's number eight. And you're like, whoa, okay, where does, where, where do we put them, right? Second step then would be, uh, once we rank those, make a decision at that same time, how many we would like to interview. And then we would set those up. It's probably pretty much an all-day or two-day event, uh, depending on those numbers. Do those interviews in person. And following those, have each person score them and not necessarily a rank order, but just a score based on a set of criteria. Then we use that and, you know, at that point, from a staff standpoint, we would take that input and be able to come back to the council. input and be able to come back to the council and say, you know, this is the recommended company, you know, we support this, this is the recommended company, something like a planning commission item almost really, right? Bring that back to you all. And if you concur, we would say, you know, we would ask that you have myself or whoever negotiate kind of a, an agreement, a contract. We're really getting down to the dollar and cents part, and then that contract will come back before you. I would hope we could complete that by year's end. That would be my goal. That sounds again, like a long time, but that is four meetings. We have four council meetings unless we meet on Christmas, we generally don't. So you got one more meeting in October, two meetings in November, one meeting in December. So we have four meetings to go through that process. So I think we need to keep it on, you know, keep, keep the, the pedal on the accelerator, so to speak. Then we'll go into that, 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 that next phase and, and, you know, it will take, I would assume it'll take those companies, I would imagine, four to, I'm, I'm guessing four to six months, maybe a little less, to really help us get to the point of saying, this is our path, let's go out and, and make a decision on architecture, right? We're going to have to make some decisions on financing, right? Bring those people back in and, and then, you know, go on down there. That would be my vision of it. I think it's doable, but it, it, it's, it's, it's aggressive. I'll say that from a, from a tiny. I, I don't know if that's the mayor or others' possession, but that, that's kind of what I've been working from, my understanding of what we're trying to achieve.
Just good to understand the process. And we had a good time. My wife and I had a good time Saturday. We didn't get to see Bear and, and perform unfortunately, but it was a lot of fun. We saw about six or seven dogs from the area perform with, with their commanders. I guess that, I don't know what you call their, their, their handlers. It, it was a lot of fun and, and it's a, that's what a great community of, of officers and dogs and, and it's just fun to see that the older dogs tend to be a little bit more disciplined and understand the, the game a little bit more than some of the younger ones, but it was, it was just a lot of fun. And I heard that, that Bear did very well. I heard he had a cheering session, section in the crowd with signs and everything. So, so it was great.
It must have been a video crew too. I know at least one person that did videos, individual.
That needs to be publicized so we can watch Bear do his thing. So.
Put something in the last newsletter and I'm sure we'll have more.
Yeah, great. And congratulations on the new public works director. We look forward to having him and in, in town.
And he'll be here for your next meeting for introductions. I'm, I'm hoping to start, have him start next week. It's, you know, employment things, you got to send them through all the, they got to go through all the ropes, right? So you, you got to do the poets of the drug and alcohols and all those other pieces, you know, make sure they're legal to work in this country and all that stuff. So it just takes time.
Where's the funding come from? I can't remember on the health clinic, where does that funding come from?
You're talking about the $10,000 that they're paying the city?
Well, for the, for the health worker.
But that is through the community health council of Wyandotte County. I believe it's some combination of CARES Act and some amount of money that they got. I don't recall if it's actually through the health department or not. I think, I know the health department has some role in it. I couldn't walk you through the trail right now, but I can get that information to give it to you. But it's a $10,000 payment that they pay to the city for essentially use of space and, and access of facilities for the length of the period.
Okay, great. Thank you. There is, I, I think all of us got an email from the Shockey Company about a training class. It's got elected officials master class that, that's coming up. I'm not sure exactly whether it's going to be January or December or January. And I've found education extremely beneficial through the years and, and all of us professionals up here, we go through training all the time in our, in our day job. And so I think in order to be the best we can be, it would be great to be involved in something like this. It's not inexpensive, but it looks very intensive and, and very, very beneficial. So I think I got an extra copy for you and Zach on that. But I, I would really like for us to consider doing this as a council. And, and if not as a total council, I really would want to do it because I always like to hone skills and, and it's always good to hang out with people that from other cities that have been through the same trials and tribulations. And they've often come up with solutions that you go, well, why didn't I think of that? But it's really good to hang, it's like going to, I got to hang out at a table with city managers for lunch yesterday, or yeah, yesterday. And it was, it's really interesting to, to hear them interact about topics and, and they're all familiar with each other's challenges and they obviously collaborate on those. And when you, when you, when you walk around with, with Mike Webb in a meeting like that, it's a long venture because everybody knows him. Everybody wants to stop and talk to him and he is extremely well respected in that environment. It is, it's really an honor to, to tag along with him on those events. So I'd encourage anybody that ever has a challenge or ever has a opportunity to do that, that they would do that. I would ask that we put the discussion about the right of way along Riverview on the agenda, next agenda. They're looking for the future. Where should we put the poles that come across Riverview? I already know the path is up 102nd Street to Riverview and across. I've spoken with Mr. Good recently from Evergy and asked him as soon as there is a plan available of, of where those poles are going to be and how it's going to be done, that, that he'd get that to us so we can review that. It'd be awful nice if we could consider the option of maybe putting those in a place that we wouldn't have to move them again as Riverview's widened and so forth. So I, I would really like to have that added to the agenda for discussion. So, and, you know, so we could discuss it further at that time. I think that's just about everything.
Councilor Law?
Appreciate the superintendent being here. That was good insightful information that we got. Swartz Road's coming along well, pretty well, looks good to me and I drove on part of it today between 102nd and 94th. Cemetery looks great. I've got a lot of compliments on the cemetery. That's, thank you for that. We can move on with the masonry work and the signage and that'd be great. Chief Widdam, I was going to ask you staple, they were donating, the lumber company was donating, are, are you burning the houses up there? Is that like training or something?
Yes, we're burning in them, we're not burning them down.
Kind of like you did on one by the.
Exactly like we did on Pacific Street too. We had from there, this past weekend we had 43 students from Johnson County Community College over, they went home for eight hours on Saturday, the weekend after next, the last week of October, we will be back to get with the honor strength and Casey K doing some more evolutions in those halls as well.
Thank you. That's, that's, that's awesome. I think that gets our name out, Ed- Edwardsville name out there as being pretty good facilities to train. So thank you for that. The last thing, I, I can come up with more, but I'm not going to because it's probably about kickoff. Zach, this is going to be funny. Would you go to Staples or something and buy a laser pointer and put it on that speaker stand so they can laser point?
We have one. It, it, it doesn't work on TVs.
They're probably, oh, well.
Yeah, I got, I got a laser pointer.
Maybe they invent something.
It doesn't work.
Yeah, maybe there's something that'll do that, but anyway. We're the whole screen. You can't really keep up very well with, with the picture. That's, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Councilor Trevor?
I too appreciate the superintendent coming out and giving his presentation. It was very informative going on, what's going on here in our district. Thank you Zach for, or Mike, the road being repaired up there in front of any house. Boy, that was the next day almost.
That was a B, I, I will have to give credit to BPU. So we contacted them. So I, it caught my attention before we, gone up there, looked, it was, there was clearly some type of failure, contacted BP. We had heard that they, that BPU agreed that it was a water thing. They got, their crew was up there the same day I called them.
That's nice.
And they came in and did rapid set flowable fill and paved over the top of it the same day. They were.
Right.
Extremely responsive.
Right.
I must give them that, that very much.
Very nice. I heard from several people, the cemetery does look wonderful, does look wonderful. Last had a couple of people ask, and I wasn't sure, is trash day tomorrow still with the holiday today? Okay. That's all I have.
Holidays and trashes.
It's very confusing.
I did it all the time.
And they all think I know and I'm like, ooh, I don't know, can remember. So thank you.
I would just, I would quickly, I do want to, could we mention in a couple of ways, but those houses that, that were using up there on that site. I mean, it, it's nice that, that, that developer, I mean, he really reached out to us. We were going to ask and he really reached out that, that, you know, we have a partner that's allowing us to use property like that for all of our benefits. So it's, it's nice to know we've got a, a community of people that are helping and assisting.
Councilman Scott?
I just want to applaud our, our efforts of both of our chiefs. They, you know, it's obvious amount of desire to be successful, not just these two guys, but the staff. And they just go above and beyond in my opinion and the connections that they have and, and just working with, just like Johnson County Community College, you know, working with them and just being a partner and continuing the training and educating of, of our officers and our fire departments is impressive. And again, I just applaud your guys' effort, I really do. It's, it's pretty awesome. I'm glad to see we have a new, or see Goodall, Goodall.
They're all pissed.
I'm looking forward to meeting him as our public works director. I know that's going to be a big relief to you and we'll be staying in here and, and looking forward to meeting him. The, that hole in the road that they quickly fixed, I hit that, you know, pretty late at night and I knew, and I knew something was going on, but then I forgot about it and then I hit it and it was bad. So they did a great job of responding because I was going to stop that morning and take a picture of it and send it to you, but they were already on the scene, you know, early morning and, and doing what they had to do. But that was a massive hole that quickly got ugly pretty quick in a matter of, you know, 24 hours. So that was good to see them getting out there. And I, and I do appreciate again, our, our, our director, our superintendent of schools coming in, Mr. Dan Brungardt, and, and he's definitely a talented man as well and, and has our students at best interest. And I, I appreciate Councilmember Adams' question and that, that hit home for a lot of us for a lot of reasons. And, and I appreciate, you know, that question and his comment and hearing that, that it gave us, gave me hope anyway that our teachers continue to have a, a voice and then there's a process for that mitigation if it has to happen. So that was nice, it's nice to see. And, and again, just congratulations on Bear competing and, and doing what he did and the, and the handler. Good job. That's all I got.
Very good. I will be quick, just since it, it was brought up. Mike, I know that planning and zoning reached out to Evergy months ago about if they had a different or most more suitable line for poles to connect with them prior, to just look at the community and, and making sure it was a good fit. Do you know if that connection ever, if they ever reached back out to them?
Well, I think really the, the discussions was around, were they looking at other sites for a substation, which they haven't, to best of my knowledge, they haven't made any decisions. They've got to put that on hold with the focus on putting in this circuit, which is, I don't want to say it's temporary because it's, you know, it'll provide service. Electricity goes, doesn't know which way it's going, but you know, they've been focused on that. And, and we have kept the planning commission update like we, you know, we, to the point we, we have and we know what their proposed alignment is now. But again, I don't, quite honestly, Mr. Adams, you know, was, had some things I just hadn't heard yet, but, but they haven't designed it all, right? They, they know they got to get from a substation to a, to a power point, which obviously their number one power use right now is the compass center area, right? Because that's where there's current development. Obviously it will serve a bigger area than that, but I think that's the focus and not, not on substation location. Because I've asked that several times.
Right.
Are you looking, you know, we, we, you know, we don't really go say, go put it on the site, but we're, you know, where are properties that may be appropriate that are, you know, especially close to the transmission lines and how that's a possibility.
And I remember you even reaching out to them before and saying, hey, let's meet. And then they just didn't follow up with you.
We, we had one, I mean, we did have one meeting about this, this distribution lines, right? And, 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 and some of those discussions. And again, the answers, Mr. Mr. Good has been, I think, good to respond, I mean, be responsive and helpful and things like that. I think it's just kind of that Evergy, you know, there's so many people doing so many different, I mean, we have three different projects and I'm talking to three different project engineers. So the Kincaid project down south is somebody different than who's working on 98th Street, who's completely different than who's working on this, this transmission or this distribution circuit line. They're all in engineering and some of them are out of the Lathan, some are out of the Beacon, some of them I'm not sure where they're from. And, and that gets to be a little frustrating because, and they, they don't always know what's interacting between them. That's what I think.
That would be frustrating.
We'll stay connected.
And I know you and I have spoken about getting things prepped before the next couple of meetings for planning, planning items along right of ways. And so depending on how that goes, we'll, we'll move forward on whether, on, on, on agenda items, but just making sure that we're ready to roll and in the right order. On, on that note, let's get home. Have a good night.
I, I would just for y'all, our city attorney is out this evening. Her father is quite ill, very ill. So keep her in your thoughts and prayers, I'll say.